Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here Tuesday, December the 1st, 2015. It's 6:05 at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting will now be called to order. I'd like to call upon Isaac Duke with the Worship and Teaching Pastor at the Brazos Covenant Ministry to lead us in our invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our Councilman, Tony Allen. All rise, please.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, may I thank you for Granbury. May I thank you that we live in such a wonderful city and all the blessings that we take for granted every day, the peace that we live in every day. And in this busy time of year, Father, we ask that you would remind us of the things that are most important in life, our family, our loved ones, our friends, our neighbors. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your sovereignty over the affairs of men. In Psalm 2, it says that "The rulers of the earth make their plans together, but the Lord sits on his throne." And so, we just acknowledge you at the beginning of these proceedings tonight. We acknowledge that there is no one like you, no one besides you, in all the earth. We thank you, Lord Jesus, that you saved us, that you died for us. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings that we live in every day in this great nation. We pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you would join me in the [inaudible]. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Exit flag. I'm the exit flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we're going to have a proclamation, and I'm going to call upon our Mayor Protem, Mickey Parsons, to present this proclamation. If you would, Mickey.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Somewhere back in the middle of the summer, the mayor and I were both invited to go to the city of Gwangon, Korea, to participate in a symposium of international cities interested in exchange. This particular program presented was tourism, tourism, culture, and arts exchange. The mayor had conflicts, but fortunately, I was able to go and be in the city of Gwangon and participate in the symposium. The city of Gwangon hosted. We had ten cities from six countries were there. I see Mr. Kim. Mr. Kim, this is Kwonam Kim, owns the Donut Hole down on Pearl Street. He is our contact for the city of Gwangon. The beautiful lady sitting next to him is Shin Soo Suk. Is that right? She's a noted singer in Gwangon and a personal from there. She was a wonderful host when we were there. Who is beside her there? Is that Min Hee? Yeah. Min Hee is from -- where do you live now, Min? In Keller, South Lake? And he's actually been -- had business here in Granbury for a long time, Taekwon Do. He was on the trip with us, as was Mr. Kim. And is that Mrs. Suk's daughter there? Welcome to Granbury. Thank you for coming to visit us. They just came over to visit. So... Mr. Kim is responsible for the relationship that we have with Korea. A number of years ago, he sent a letter out to different cities around Fort Worth when he was president of the Korean Association in Fort Worth and asked if any cities or anybody was interested in a student exchange program. And the city of Granbury, the mayor at that point in time responded that we would be. And then, over the years, we've had a number of student exchanges between students coming here to visit in the month of January, and then us sending students over there during the summertime. So, that's where our relationship with Gwangon comes. So, they put -- they had the symposium. I did get to go. They treated us wonderfully, as they always do. The wonderful thing about Korea, it's very industrious. You walk out of the airport, and you wonder, wow, how do they keep this place this clean? It's phenomenal. They're industrious, hard-working folks, and they love Americans. I know that. So, I had a good visit. I was able to present Granbury and our history and our tourism trade in a talk there at the symposium to some 600 attendees. It's really interesting to talk history and really interesting to talk about that in front of people who have lived under dynasties that were 4,000 years, you know, and they've been through two or three of those. And so, you're talking, well, our buildings are 150 years old, you know? And then, the other dichotomy was that I'm sitting there talking about a county with 60,000 people, 8,000 people in the city, and I think the other smallest town was 3.5 million. So... But anyway, so, good relationships, as far as I'm concerned, were established with a lot of people there. They know about Granbury. And so, before I went, the mayor, we came up the proclamation that we presented to the -- I had a private meeting with the mayor of Gwangon, and we presented him with a proclamation and a city flag. And we said, whereas the city of Granbury, Texas, United States of America, and the city of Gwangon, Jalamendo, Republic of Korea, agree to establish this relationship for the purpose of mutual prosperity and development; and whereas this agreement that transcends national boundaries will benefit both cities through cooperation, trust, and respect with dialogue and shared ideas regarding areas of common interest, including government administration, culture, education, economics, and tourism; and whereas both parties will freely share knowledge and information to facilitate the development of our sister-cityhood, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Nen Hewlett, in signing this agreement, pledge to work to the city's utmost ability to cultivate this mutual beneficial relationship. We also traveled to a city called Don Yang. It's a beautiful little city on a river, major river. They had a hotel arrangement much like Wolf Creek Lodge or Wolf Lodge. They had a lot of wonderful tourism assets. And so, it was a very informative tour. I'm going to present the talks and everything to the Visit Granbury. I have a lot of email addresses for people to -- for us to send to and hopefully get people to come visit us from China, Malaysia, Singapore, Japan, and Korea, and maybe even the United States. Mr. Mayor, I have a gift here that I would like to present to the city of Granbury, and it's a gift from the mayor of Gwangon. As you know, their writing is a lot different than ours. Their alphabet's a lot different. It's very technical, very precise in its presentation. So, calligraphy is very important there. My friend, Mr. Kim, does calligraphy, and it's, you know, they've got all the different size brushes and that kind of thing. But one of the things that's important in the Korean society is the pen. And they have annual contests in which they present the way that they do the different pens. And in this one, this particular pen that we've been given is one of the President's Award. And it's a bamboo pen, very gorgeous. Has the scroll with it and the two pens. So, it won the President's Award, and it talked about some of the things in the literature, about the significance of different things about the bamboo pen and what the thought process is and culture about that. So, this was given to us by the mayor of Gwangon, and I wanted to present it to the city. And could we ask Mr. Kim and those who could come up there and join us?
Thank you very much. 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 Thank you very much.[765.01]
Half of the roadway difference from the expansion on the thoroughfare plan in lieu of improving Old Granbury Road, and you can see that itemized on the plat. That's that elongated rectangle to the north. There's a variance to 338 to not provide interior utility easements on lots with shared building walls. Again, this would only affect those placements of structures where the property line and common wall exist, not the exterior of the building where franchise utilities could go. We have a variance to 3945 to not provide sewer along the frontage of Old Granbury Road. Sewer is basically flowing down toward Old Granbury, toward the end of the cul-de-sac and into Ashley Oaks where there's a connection point. There'll be stub outs to the north point of this for connectivity onto Old Granbury Road for future developments to connect on it and extend from that point forward. This is a similar variance that we saw on Gemstone not too long ago. And we have a variance to 3684 to not provide sidewalks along Old Granbury Road. There will be internal sidewalks to the development. So the city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the plat application as presented, and you also have a, as part of your correspondence, a letter from your city engineer recommending approval of the variance and the plat as presented by the applicant. Mayor will be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, are there any questions for Scott?
Scott, did I hear they're wanting a variance on no sidewalks?
There'll be variances internal to the development, so along the street that they're building, it's just they won't be along the Granbury Road where the bar date is.
I live in a subdivision that doesn't have any sidewalks, and I won't be approving any variances in the future for no sidewalks. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the said variances. Variance says 3.1 and 4.10, variance 3.3 point A, variance 3.9 and 4.5, and variance 3.6 point A point four.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley. Second. I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That is approved. Moving down to item number nine, a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-53 regarding a request of Philip Clean to rezone a 0.913 acre tract of the Jeremiah Campbell survey abstract number 123 and the Benjamin Green survey abstract number 196 from the interim holding to light commercial. This property is addressed as 1504 and 1506 Fall Creek Highway. Scott, you want to give us some more update on that one, please?
Mayor, Counsel, this is a particular piece of property that was annexed in around 2006. It was zoned interim holding at the time of annexation. It was developed, it was predeveloped at the time of annexation, so what you see there on the aerial and the use that's applied there has existed since the annexation, which is basically office light commercial. The applicant is requesting to zone it to light commercial, to become compliant and a lawful use within the zoning district and operate under the appropriate zoning district. As you read off on the property description, it is not platted, so by our requirements, they can actually continue the lawful use within the district contained inside the city. It's just any building expansion which require a building permit would require a plating consideration at the time. So again, this is the use that's in place at the time of annexation. They just want to get under the lawful classification of our zoning matrix. Both city staff and P&amp;Z support the request for rezoning as presented.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any questions for, is there a stop check?
Mayor.
Councilman Parsons?
If you have a change in ownership, does that require the plat?
No, sir.
No, just some change in the structures or?
Yeah. What kicks in a plat application is a building permit application beyond a certain percentage of the existing floor area. But if they, if they transfer title by the area described of the parent tract that predates our annexation, then it's a lawful transaction under our subdivision ordinance. It's exempted.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Scott, it's commercial all the way around there, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You did say there was no variances or nothing involving this. Counsel, any more questions for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said variance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I think you meant rezone and not variance, correct?
Yeah, I did. You are correct. We'll do that over at, I'll entertain a motion to approve the light commercial zoning. And the motion stands. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Yes.
We have the motion and we have the second. Any more discussion, Counsel? Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. Item number 10 is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-54 regarding a request of the City of Granbury to amend sections of the City of Granbury subdivision ordinance number 09-360. The general purpose of the proposed amendment is to include surety requirements for those private infrastructure improvements or facilities which are held to the same design standards as the public improvements or facilities per the regulations contained within the subdivision ordinance and the public improvement policy. Scott, you want to give us some more on that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. You each have a copy in your agenda packet of all the changes being proposed. In essence, all those highlighted changes, the definition changes, comprehensively are a philosophical change in going from a public improvement agreement to a facilities agreement. And when you look at the term "public improvement agreement" contained within the subdivision ordinance, that means that we can't acquire surety or financial guarantee from developers as they build private improvements. And one of the larger ticket items that we see for private improvements is private roads. So if there's an issue under this subdivision ordinance that's putting at the city a risk, certainly we want to make Counsel aware of that and your deliberations on this matter. So in a hypothetical situation, if a subdivision comes in, proposes private roads, under our current ordinance, a public improvement agreement would not harvest financial security to back that proposed development. And if there's ever a default, the city's not holding any money in order to finish off the subdivision. So say we have a 40-lot subdivision with two streets that are private, there's a default or somehow there's a court issue that's tying up the funds of that developer that the city can't, the developer can't finish the development. Those lots are already sold. That final plat's been filed at the courthouse. Some of those lots are sold, and we may have a situation where buyers are knocking on the door at City Hall going, "Who's finishing my road?" And the question then becomes, well, the way our ordinance is structured, it only requires surety for public improvements, not private improvements. And the question ultimately is, is who pays for that? Right now, the city doesn't hold guarantee for that. So the long and short of all those highlighted changes is these changes comprehensively require surety for private improvements that meet those subdivision design standards. Streets is the big ticket item, and of course, this applies to drainage improvements as well. Typically, we don't see private water and sewer improvements, but those are the four, those are the four major infrastructure issues: water, sewer, streets, drainage. And out of those, the way our ordinance is structured is we're not recovering financial guarantee for two of those typically, if a developer chooses to go with private, private streets or private drainage. So we want to make you aware of this, that there's a certain amount of risk that the city has in the structure of its ordinance. And this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We made them aware of the risk, and certainly this came out of P&amp;Z with a recommendation unanimously of support. They wanted to make sure that the city is covered. And just as a side note, this financial guarantee, this financial surety is returned back to the developer once the project's completed. We don't hold it in perpetuity. We just hold it as financial guarantee. And then once the project's inspected and completed, it's returned back to the financial institution that gave the guarantee to the city. So I know, I know the other question is whether or not this is going to increase costs. I know that from the city's perspective, there's no additional fee that we harvest for this, but the financial institution that requires surety for these types of developments sometimes charged based on percentage of the construction cost of what's being guaranteed. So if we roll the street cost into this, then this may increase the cost somewhat of the guarantee that's being submitted to the city. But that's a fee given to the financial institution or the bonding company, not given to the city. So I hope this, I explain this well. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Mayor and Counsel, I'm Ron Reese, and I very much am in favor of the ordinance. We have seen what can happen when developers are not, more or less, their feet held to the fire. I watched houses being built inside of the city limits and outside at the same time. Those that were built inside were much better construction than those built on the outside. And the same thing goes for private infrastructure, that as a matter of economics, there's a number of developers that will try to go the cheapest route. Therefore, I fully support adopting this, and I will be giving the city council a news article in relating to this topic. Thank you.
Are there any more public concerns or issues on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, are there any questions or concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the, these changes to the subdivision ordinance as they have been presented, and also to make sure that the counsel enters the textual changes to the, in the form of this agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, Counsel? Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is the proposed bond insurance, assurance, sorry. The first one being consider adopting resolution 15-32 authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, and the next one being consider adopting resolution 15-33 declaring expectations to reimburse expenditures with proceeds for future debt. I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to kick this off, and I'm sure he's going to call upon John Martin to come up and give the counsel any details on this. You would, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I just want to begin by saying this, this is the beginning of, of the end of a very long project. The airport project has been on the radar for, I believe, over a decade, and we've made some big strides in resolving those barriers that have been keeping us back. This, this portion of the, of the project is needed to fund, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin, our financial advisor, and let him explain briefly what the resolution says. But basically, I'll tell you that it's for basic use of the airport, building and extending and creating of the airport facilities. Also, we included police facilities, firefighting facilities, and park creation facilities, including acquisition of land and right-of-way and professional services rendered associated with those type projects. We anticipate that most of this money is earmarked to go towards the airport project. However, the timeline of the airport project has to be synchronized with TechDOT's funding, and so that may allow us to move forward with some of these other projects as we have the money to take care of those activities. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Thanks, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor and Counsel, John Martin with Hilltop Securities. Glad to be here this evening. The, this is the first step in, for that you have to take with the issuance of certificates of obligation. So it, it says that you're making, given your notice that you intend to issue no more than $10 million in combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. That's the first part. We'll be coming back to you after that notice period runs for, there's a 30-day period, and then we'll be back to you January 19th at your council meeting then with competitive bids. We intend to go out on a, as a competitive sale rather than a negotiated sale and take bids for these certificates with a target date to close February 17th. So, so that's that first item with the, the resolution approving the notice of intent to issue the COs. Then the next one is for the reimbursement resolution. That's really a belt and suspenders-type resolution, just to make sure that if, what expenditures you all have, you have a council authorization to be able, after you've issued those COs, to repay whatever funds you borrowed from or took that money from to pay those expenses, so you can incorporate that. This is all going into long-term assets, so you have the ability to reimburse yourselves from the certificate proceeds if you so choose. So if there's some expenditures that need to be made before that February 17 closing date, then you have the ability to repay yourselves. That's all there is to it. You might not even need it, but just in case. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Counsel, is there any questions for, for John? Come on, Mr. Allen.
Well, I think John does a good job. You know, you're going to do John, and thank you for that. But question I got is, I know whenever we looked at other bonds and Wayne, when he was city manager, told us that we got into a certain percent, our bond rating went down with debt. Are we anywhere near that, John, or are we still safe?
No, sir. I think that you all are in really impeccable condition. I mean, in terms of, I don't see any concerns that the rating agencies would, would have at all. Again, you know, you're, a city like Granbury is very conservative and doesn't like debt, and so you really don't have a whole lot of debt by comparison to, when they, when they look at the things that you're controlling, if you'll remember from the last rating report that we received, the things that you all are controlling, you all do an awesome job at. The things that you don't have any, you don't have any control over some of the other entities that issue debt. Schools, that's their only way to finance capital improvement, so they have usually large, large debt by comparison to cities. So when they look at the overall per capita debt burden, the things that you're controlling, you have, you don't have any control over the cities. So, but you, we all have to pay school taxes, county taxes, and, as well as city taxes. So that was the, that's been, the only knock is the overall debt burden, but it's not, it's called the overlapping debt burden, not just your debt burden.
I know the rate can change between now and whenever February comes around, but what it, what's right now, something like this, roughly?
Well, I would suggest to you that we should be in the lower threes.
Low threes. John, I bragged on you. Can you go in the twos?
Well, Mr. Allen, there's a little problem that the Fed has made some, made, keeps making noise about raising the Fed funds rate, so we don't know, you know, are they going to do that or not in the next couple of weeks? And I think the market's already pretty much built that in because they've been yakking about this for months. So it may be a, you know, just a...
I do have one question, Chris, then. Whenever we were discussing this, do we look at 3% or what do we look at?
Yes, the numbers, he provided all those numbers to us.
Okay. John's always got us the best deal, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We've also, in the projections and so forth that we've provided, Ava, who's not here tonight, but we've been working closely with her, and she's very, very conservative, as you know, and so we've taken a very, very conservative tax-based projections, too, so assuming very little growth, I mean, like 2%. So you all have seen much more than that on an annual basis. So we're just, better be safe than sorry.
I share that same value of conservatism. So do these other folks.
And you know, we do have a financial advisor on the council now, so he'll be watching you really closely, John.
Got it.
Counselor, any more questions or concerns for John?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
John, I'm just curious, talking about interest rates, you know, this has been a very long process. Mickey, I'm going to ask you, when did, when did this all start?
Well, it was in process when I came on council, and I've been here 10 years. So, yeah, early on, we were looking at getting it done. Then we went to Washington, D.C., and so that would have been back when David Southern was still mayor. And we went to Washington, D.C. and visited with Senator Hutchinson and Senator, who would, well, I guess Cronin was still there. I don't remember who our rep, who our representative was, but we visited with them, and we procured something like $17 million worth of federal funds for development of the airport. So that's, that's been available and working with that, that money for quite a while, so it's a long drawn-out process.
Well, what I'm, what I'm curious about is, you know, we, we all would have liked this to go faster, but I'm just, I'm just looking back and thinking, you know, what would the interest rate been five, seven, eight years ago?
Much higher than now.
So maybe, maybe this is the way it was all stored out.
Somewhat of a blessing in disguise. Yeah.
So if we put off every project for 10 years, think of the savings.
Let's just, let's just be thankful the 17 million's been hanging around and hadn't been kicked.
Hadn't gone away, yeah.
Thanks, John.
One more question for John, Counsel? Thank you very much, John.
Yep.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution 15-32 authorizing the publication of notice for intention to issue certificates of obligation.
So moved.
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... So counsel, I'll entertain a motion for a nominee for the chairperson for the TV, television channel advisory board.
Mayor, has there been anybody that said they'd be interested in that?
Actually, me and Chris have sat in on several of them meetings, I have had some conversation with a few of them, I know John Back has had an interest in it somewhat, but that's the only one that's really expressed anything to me, or he said he would do it.
John Back has quite a bit of experience in it.
He sure does.
So I would nominate John.
Okay, we have a nomination for John Back as the chairperson of the TV Advisory Board. Any more candidates? If not, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to select John Back as the chairperson for the Public Television Channel Advisory Board.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor of John Back being the Television Channel Advisory Board Chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, John Back will be the chairperson for the Public Television Channel Advisory Board. Our next item is to consider casting a ballot for the election of three members of the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors. As you know, counsel, we were, we selected people to serve on this board, the selection, I believe, from the council was Walter Baltry, Brooks Goodson, and Terry Johnson, but they also have Tony Smith on there. Our, what we're gonna be doing tonight is selecting three out of these four to, to serve on the Appraiser, Appraiser District Board of Directors. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion for three of these candidates.
Mayor, I nominate Brooks Goodman, Goodson, Terry Johnson, and Tony Smith.
Okay, I've got a nomination for Brooks Goodson, Terry Johnson, and Tony Smith. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the candidates Brooks Goodson, Terry Johnson, and Tony Smith for the Granbury City Council's Board of Directors of the Appraiser District. I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
A second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor of Brooks Goodson, Terry Johnson, and Tony Smith, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Those will be the three candidates we will submit to the, the County Appraisal District, I'm sorry. Our next item is to discuss the use of alternate, alternative electric vehicles on the city streets. This item was put on the agenda by Councilman Tony Allen, so I'm gonna call upon Tony Allen to give us a little background on that, if you'd please.
Thank you, Mayor. We had voted on this about three or four years ago, on certain streets, you could have golf carts, which I know UPS uses them a lot in delivery in Harbor Lakes, Waters Edge area, where they can get out and save the smug and stuff, and their diesel and their gas and their vehicles, and we were seeing more and more electrical vehicles around town. And this summer, I went to, I want to say Port Aransas, but I'm sure that's where it was at, to be honest with you, I don't remember. Anyway, I was down on the coast, and they must've had 5,000 golf carts down there, and they were, all of them were four-seaters, they had some, it was to set six, and they had rules and regulations, you had to be sixteen, kinda like we do, you had to have headlights, you had to have taillights, you had to give singles, it was a pretty strict rule, you couldn't get on certain highways, and when we passed this last time, I don't know how it happened, but we missed one of the busiest side streets probably in our community, and it's behind Lowe's, and we had a gentleman, and I apologize, I can't even think of his name right now, he lives in the Island.
What is it?
Shiflett.
Say it again.
Lee Shiflett.
Lee Shiflett, thank you very much. I was saying Lee Pickens, I know Lee and...
We, we had a citizen.
But Lee Shiflett. He had, he had written several of us a email, and I was asking about it, I don't know if he got stopped there or not, I have no idea, but anyway, I'd like to see this go back and, and I believe that's Hill Street, and let's, we've got a list here, and let's go ahead and fix this where people can use them, 'cause you've got several businesses there, then that little strip center you can't even get through, or to, from, if you're coming out of Harbor Lakes, Waters Edge, the Island, or Canada Bay, and I know a lot of people say, well, Tony, you live in Canada Bay? Yes, I do. I just got my first golf cart about three months ago, and I certainly enjoy it, and I was gonna put this on the agenda a good little while back, and talking with Chris, he just got here, and we decided to wait till closer to Christmas, so it's there, and I'd like to see this, get this approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Counsel, are there any discussions or concerns about this item?
Well, I, I would just wanna know the safety issues involved, if, you know, I know we're gonna allow this to the other parts of town, or...
Well, I will say, Councilman Couch, and I know we've done some research on this, we've done some, had some conversation with our safety departments, but as you know, Harbor Lakes Drive and Waters Edge Drive, which both of them are pretty populated with traffic, was accepted as a route that you could have golf carts on, a lot of that was due to the fact that we had golf cart, a golf course in, in the area within two miles, and people were driving their golf carts to the, to and from the golf course. Hill Boulevard is a arm off of one of those streets that runs right on, as Councilman Allen said, behind Lowe's and this, and looking at that road, it's, actually, it's not even posted at this time, I think there is a post, probably up by 377 somewhere, but it's, it's probably a 30 to 35 mile an hour speed zone, the roads are fairly wide there, and we've asked that the, the safety department to, to take a look at that and be able to accommodate, accommodate that as they have with the Waters Edge and the Harbor Lakes Drive also, and like Councilman Allen has noted, that when we, when we approved that, the golf carts had to, had to meet a certain standard, they had to be safe, and they had to abide by the same rules, they had to be of age to drive the vehicles, basically, just like driving a car, and so if any of that is not heard to, then the police officers would be, or the person would be subject to a ticket, just as anybody else would be, so. Now, I have, I have requested, and we can reach out to our safety department if, if it's possible, maybe even to, to put in some of those areas, the signage where it says golf carts are, would be on those roads somewhat, but, you know, we don't, we don't do anything for bicycles or pedestrians that are jogging, and matter of fact, in that area there, I've seen a donkey in a cart going through there, and I don't know if they asked permission to do that, but there has been that also on that road, so I am, I am, I am grateful that this citizen has came to us with a concern, but he also wants to be safe, so his concern is, I would like to drive my golf cart on that street, but I wanna make sure that it's safe for me to do so.
Mayor.
Councilman Myers?
I'd like to make the proposal that we inquire with the Streets Department, or I've talked to Chris Kaufman, our city manager, about this. I know in other communities, they have a controlled golf cart lane, and I don't know that we can accommodate every street like this, but perhaps we could work with our Streets Departments, and as you mentioned, have some kinda signage. I know in our neighborhood, which you and I live in, I have witnessed children on golf carts in the center of the street, and not just one child, but six hanging off a golf cart, and I know that's not legal, but they're doing it, and I think that what we might could do is, is, I know in, in certain communities where I visit when I'm, when I'm working, a lot of these golf cart communities or destination communities have a designated lane, and that could perhaps be for bicyclists, or joggers, or golf carts, it's, and I think the streets might be wide enough to draw a lane for these guys, so they're not in the middle of the road, because I just think that we've seen, you know, we had to lower the, the speed limit on Waters Edge Drive because of the, the, the traffic going too fast, and now it's 30 miles an hour, and, and they still don't really adhere to that speed limit, and if a, if a big truck or a teenage vehicle decides to whip around that corner and, and get involved in an accident with a golf cart, I'm really concerned that the golf cart's gonna lose. So, where I am in favor of having, you know, access to private communities and golf carts, I think that we might could address having a designated lane for these golf carts, so they're just not driving around in the middle of the road. Is that something that we could look into and maybe, you know, address with the city manager?
And I think we could definitely look into that, but there are some, I mean, when you look at the golf cart traffic, and the changing of the speed zone actually was introduced and, and probably should've been changed when it became a residential area, because residential areas are 30 to 35, correct me if I'm wrong, Mitch, but it should've been a 30 or 35 miles an hour zone, and I think when me and the chief got together, we decided that there's three speed zones down through there, and let's just make it one speed zone, and it became 30 miles an hour, which is, 30 miles an hour, give or take a couple miles, is, is enough speed going down through that area, like Councilperson Myers had talked about, there's joggers there, there's walkers there, there's bicyclers down in that area, and so, and there are golf carts that go to and from the golf course, so we wanna make sure we made it safe for everybody. And golf carts, that's the purpose of putting the slow-moving vehicle signs on them, putting the lights on them, putting the brakes on them, putting the mirrors on them, so that they are able to drive down the street, and most golf carts, I'd say all golf carts, normally drive on the far right side of the road, and if people choose to pass them, which I don't know why they would wanna pass on a 30 mile an hour zone, because the golf carts normally go around 25 to 27 miles an hour, so if they're passing them, they're trying to get up to a speed that's probably not acceptable on the road as it is, but there are, and, and we've talked about that, there are the, there are some areas there where the streets are wide enough over in that area, and we could possibly put some lanes in there for pedestrian, joggers, bicyclers, or, or golf carts, but then, then again, you put another stipulation where they are restricted to just that area and stuff, so, we'd have to be real careful with that. Chris, you wanna?
You bet.
Add to that a little bit?
I'm sitting here reviewing the, the existing ordinance, and it doesn't say where you can drive golf carts, it says where you cannot.
Right.
In Pearl Street, Houston Street, Morgan Street, Plaza Drive, 600 block through 1200 block of Harbor Lakes Drive, the portion of the street extending from Plaza Drive to the entrance of Harbor Lakes subdivision, but it kinda tells you, from those flags back to the north is prohibited. Crawford Court, Pirate Drive, North Meadows Drive, South Meadows Drive, Crossland Drive, Park Street, Autumn Ridge Drive, Larry Miller Drive, Deputy Mayor Larry Miller, excuse me, Howard Clemmons Drive, Lapan Highway, North Jones Street, West Rucker Street, North Hannaford Street, East Moore Street, North Hill Street, or North Hill Boulevard, and South Hill Boulevard. So everywhere else, it's legal, I guess. Now, all those streets mean a lot more to y'all than they do me, 'cause I don't know exactly where they are, but are these, is this North and South Hill, is the hill you're talking about, behind Lowe's?
The Hill Boulevard, South Hill Boulevard.
Did I, did I, what I heard you just say is that Hill Boulevard on that side is not, is open?
It says it's prohibited.
Yeah, these are the ones that are prohibited, and that's what we did before.
It's Hill both sides.
Right.
Yeah.
Going right and going...
I read the prohibited, because the ordinance only addresses what's prohibited.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, you, also, I would just like to state that there's safety equipment already in the ordinance required for golf carts, I'll be honest with you, I hadn't seen one yet with rearview mirrors.
They all got rearview mirrors.
Okay.
They're on the inside.
No helmets. A slow-moving emblem, mounted on the back of those triangles, I hadn't seen that, so, you know, there's a lot of safety issues we probably need to be looking at, chief, but I know for a fact that's going on the record, that the chief has stated in staff meeting that he's adamantly opposed to golf carts being in vehicular traffic areas, they're made for golf carts, that's his perspective, and I need to share that with his staff, so we respect his position, and I know that y'all do too, and you also have to deal with your constituents, so. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that out to you, so what I need to, what I've gathered so far is, we need to investigate a traffic lane.
If we can do so.
Where it could be done, and we'll get with the Street Department and engineer to determine how wide a street would need to be to accommodate another lane for alternative vehicle traffic, and then also look at considering including all of Hill Street, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Are you gonna do...
South.
South?
Yeah, not across.
Yeah. What are you gonna do, oh, Chris, whenever they wanna jog down through there, and it's not wide enough to put a jog in?
Pedestrians always have the right of way.
What?
Pedestrians on a city street always have the right of way.
So they jog where they want to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if, how about the guy with the donkey?
Well, that's...
I'm concerned about that guy.
That's probably, that's probably somewhere in the Animal Control Ordinance that I'm not familiar with.
He actually has a slow-moving vehicle in the back of his.
But is there some more direction you'd like for staff to, to work on?
Yeah, I would just like to be sure that we're not exposing the city to liability, I mean, if this is something that's done in other cities, I'd like to kinda know that. If someone were to get killed in a golf cart, I wanna know that we've got some cover here.
And it's actually a state, if, we, by our charter, we can, we can go in and, and make our, say whatever we want to say, but a state regulation has 35, I think it's 35 mile, any street, any street, you know, so we, we went out and said, no, we're not gonna do that, but unless they're made safe and they're made to where they can accommodate a golf cart.
And I do think that the enforcement of, of the regulations of these golf carts has been pretty loose based on the political climate, and, you know, I think if we're serious about safety, we should be encouraging our citizens to follow our safety guidelines, and failure to do so would be a problem, and Mitch may have a comment on that. You don't wanna run out and ride everybody tickets tomorrow, but, you know, there are rules.
One thing that I want to make sure that everybody is 100% clear on, and I don't know, I can't remember whether it's addressed in the ordinance or not, you cannot operate a golf cart on a street further than two miles from where you live, where you store that golf cart, number one, and number two, you're restricted to only be able to do it during the daytime. I don't wanna give anybody the idea that they can drive four or five miles down, down the road to go shopping, because you cannot drive more than two miles from where you store that golf cart, meaning if you keep it at your house, you can't go further than two miles from your residence.
Is that for our ordinance, chief?
That's state law.
State law, okay.
Yes, sir. So I don't wanna give anybody the impression here that you can drive your golf cart all the way around town, 'cause you cannot, okay? The state intended for this to be done in a master-planned community that has a golf court on it, golf course on it. That's, that's how this law was created, was for a master-planned community, golf club community, to be able to operate these vehicles on the street inside that master-planned community. It was not intended to be driven on a city street, sir?
Wonder how Port Aransas gets by with it?
The state, the state gives municipalities the right to create ordinances for golf carts to be driven on a city street.
To extend it more than two miles?
No, sir.
That's what I'm asking, oh, down there, you can drive it for 15 miles.
Well, I've got, I gotta find out exactly what it is that you're talking about, that they have down there, 'cause it might be your definition of a golf cart, but it might not actually be a golf cart.
Whether, are there any worse, like you see at Harbor Lakes, with a two-seater, with bags on the back, to four-seaters, to six-seaters?
Well, there are some golf carts at Harbor Lakes, Councilman Allen, that are licensed, and once you put a license on them, they're, they're an electric vehicle, am I right, chief? I mean, they have a car license on them.
The, the state does not license golf carts.
Well, the...
They don't register golf carts, you can't get plates for them, you can't get, you can't register it through the motor, the text, the text order, you, you can't register motor vehicle. There is, and here's where I think somebody might be confused, is they have things called neighborhood electric vehicles, that those vehicles have to meet federal safety motor vehicle guidelines, meaning they gotta have a windshield that meets safety standards, they gotta have seat belts, they gotta have all other kinds of stuff, and they can look a lot like what you're talking about here, so you might be, that's what might be those vehicles are, and they're not actually golf carts. By definition, a golf cart is primarily used to be driven on a golf cart, of course, okay? So when you start talking about neighborhood vehicles that are meeting safety standards, you're talking about a whole nother ballgame than a golf cart.
And you absolutely could be right, chief, I'm not, 'cause I'm not familiar with what they do down there, I just know what I rented, but we've had this in Forcheneff, what, two years, three years?
Three. Three, I believe?
Three.
How many tickets has y'all's department written on these?
We don't see people driving golf carts.
Y'all don't?
No.
Thank you.
We do not.
Well, just for clarification, so you're saying anyone in the city can, if they had a golf cart, can drive that within two miles of their, of their home?
As long as they're not on those streets that are listed where it's prohibited, and the speed limit's under 35 miles an hour. Yes, sir.
Most residential neighborhoods are 30 miles an hour.
And where did the list of the streets come from?
The ordinance that y'all developed.
The way that list was generated, we requested... The way that list was generated, we requested two roads, I believe it was, wasn't it Mitch? Or maybe three?
Yeah, at the beginning.
And at that time, instead of making the list saying, this is the ones that are authorized, we made the list of which ones were not authorized, and that leaving those two, Harbor Lakes Drive and Waters Edge Drive, that you could drive on with your golf cart.
Well, it sounds to me that our very own ordinance is more restrictive than the state.
It is. It is. It has to be, yeah.
It needs to be.
Yeah.
I don't wanna see golf carts down South Morgan, I don't wanna see golf carts down North Houston.
Right.
Where we have semi-trucks and everything else driving down it. I don't wanna see golf carts going down high-traffic areas. That is a disaster waiting to happen. When this first came about, it was about driving in Harbor Lakes, people to be able to drive their golf carts to the golf course. And then it grew from that to, well, what about driving here? And what about driving here? And well, can I take it here? And can I take it there? And it came to the point to where we had to decide where they can't drive. It was easier to say where you can't drive it than it is to say where you can. So we picked those roads that have the most congestion, most history of accidents, and we put those on that list as the place where a golf cart cannot go. And that's how it ended the way it did.
Do you have safety concerns with existing streets?
I have safety concerns with any golf cart on a city street. If it was Pecan Plantation or DeCadeova, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I wouldn't care. That's what it was designed to be. It's not designed to be on a city street.
There are a lot nearer in there than there are here.
Speed limit's a lot slower there, too.
There's more out there, Chief, than there are here in Granbury.
That's where it was intended to be driven. It was not intended to be driven downtown Granbury.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we let our city manager and the staff look into it and bring it back to us in January.
I have a motion to let the city manager and the safety department do, to do some more research on this and bring it back to the council at a later date. Is that your motion, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. Sometime by February. The way we get it before summer.
So I have a motion to let the city manager and the safety department to reevaluate this and bring it back to the council sometime in February.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion on this item, counsel? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, we'll let the city manager and the safety department to come back at a later date with that. At this time, we're gonna allow the city manager to discuss some information and operations report of items that are going on in the city. Mr. Chris Kaufman.
I'll make the speedy.
You will?
Yes, sir, I'll try. Thank y'all. The first thing I have is the Downtown Transportation Alternative Project. I believe if you were here at 4:30, you saw the presentation, but for those that weren't here, I just wanna inform you and the rest of the world that this project is a grant of about $1.7 million. It's an 80% grant. We provide 20% of the money, they provide 80% of the money. It's federal money that's derived from gas clean tax, that's earmarked for public transportation enhancement projects. And it was a statewide competition through TexDOT, and we were selected to receive those funds. We have yet to fine-tune the project to get it into any kind of position to submit to the state for future, for the documentation of a grant application to be, not the application, but the grant contract award to be sent back to us to be executed. But at some point in the future, within the next 90 days, we'll probably be receiving some documentation from TexDOT, bring it to the council, to vote on it, to officially say, okay, we're ready to receive your funds and begin to move forward with this project. The public is gonna be involved in meetings and have the opportunity to participate in their comments. And also, if there's anyone that is in the sound of my voice, either on television or through the news media or any other media, that has questions, please contact myself or Scott Sopczek about this project, and we can help you with all the details. There's no need to be concerned or be in fear of us doing anything that's negative to you or your business. But I will tell you that when you get a new sidewalk in front of your business, it is painful, and it takes a little bit of time, but it's not gonna be a lot of time, and it'll be worth it in the long run for you. There's also some historical concerns, and we're gonna meet those historical concerns. And I want everybody to be aware that the state has to approve this project in relation to Texas Historical Commission and their requirements to maintain our historical relics that we have. So we can't change a building because we're doing a sidewalk. I mean, we're gonna have to do what they tell us to do, and that's just the way it works, because it's a nationally-registered, state-registered historic square. And we're very fortunate, we're very proud of that. City and staff very proud and aware of that, and we wanna maintain that, and we don't wanna change that. It's a jewel to our community, and we just are looking into ways to use this grant funds to make it better. The next project I wanna tell you about was the water treatment plant, and y'all may be aware of that, but that's the new two-and-a-half-million-gallon desalination reverse osmosis plant that we're gonna build. Construction should start sometime in January. The paperwork is going through the process of bonds and legal documents and getting that worked out, but that's right on track. And as you'll recall, we borrowed the money early in this year to do that project, is through the Texas Water Development Board, called the SWIFT Fund, and that's an acronym for some water drinking fund that was earmarked through the legislature. We were able to borrow this money at 1.9% interest, and we don't have to start paying anything until we start drawing the funds. And so as the project is built, it takes about 18 months to construct, it will be doing draws against that money, and then we'll have some debt service to deal with at that future time. But it's gonna be a great asset for our community, and just wanted to remind everybody that that project will be coming. And eventually, we'll get off of the, what they call the SWATS plant, which is, used to be the BRA desal plant on the river. And we hope that we'll be able to provide our community with the same quality of water at a lower cost. And as far as the cost for those folks, it will be substantially lower. We will have debt service that we haven't had before, but eventually that will fall off as well. We are doing some water well projects that y'all began before I got here, and that, let me see here, I gotta note, the James Road Water Well and Pump Station should be in operation second week in December. So that pretty well completes everything that was in the process of being drilled when I got here. And I think there's one more well that's still yet to be drilled that was on that project, and that'll probably occur first quarter of next year. Airport, well, the street paving project, as many of you know, Plaza Drive is complete. We've been working on some water lines underneath Bluff Street and Crockett Street, and those are complete. Work on the water line on Thrash Street will begin the first week of December, which is now, and that should be soon. The construction should begin on Crockett Street from Moore to Barton, Lancaster Street to 1,000 block, North Travis Street, 100 to 500 block, Kalinko Drive from 900 to 1,000 block, North Brazos Street, 100, 200 block, and West Bluff Street. And those should start in January as well, but the city crews have been replacing water lines where they can, and we've got that one more to do on Thrash Street. Airport project, I just want, we've kinda covered a lot of ground tonight, but I wanted the public to be aware that this is about a three-year construction project that will occur, and it'll begin in 2017, physical year 2017, so that'd be September of 2016, is when the funding from TexDOT for the, some of the construction will be made available. And it'll be in three phases, and there'll be a phase for each year. And also, we met with TexDOT last week, airport aviation director, Gary Hawkins and I went to Austin and met with the director of aviation for TexDOT, and communicated where we were on the project, and they're very excited to get with us and make this happen, and committed the, you know, reassured us of the commitment of the funds that they earmarked years ago that Councilmember Parsons mentioned. And they're very excited to help us, and they are also gonna be seeking additional funds to further assist us with this project as the prices come along and we see exactly what everything's gonna cost. But they are gonna be looking to the FAA for about another $5 million. So hopefully, they'll get favorable status on that. This project has been eyed by the FAA and TexDOT for many years, and there have been promises made to the city over the years, none in writing, but based on character of the staff and the agencies that offered it. And so we've come a long way, and I'm excited to say that we're about ready to start building. It'll take a while for the Brazos Electric and the United Co-op to move their lines that need to be in compliance, and we've got some electric lines that need to be moved. And we're working on some of those issues right now, I've been meeting with them. Last week, we met with them as well, and had some very positive and favorable conversations to assure us that they're gonna work with us, cooperate with us, and get these projects done as quickly as possible. And they're looking at the same timeline to be able to do the construction that the Phase 1, that TexDOT's willing to pay for. So it all works together pretty smooth. Also, I wanted to announce that there's gonna be Christmas carols in Shanley Park on December 12th, provided for by Lakeside Baptist. And I think last year, they did Christmas cards or something, I'm not sure. They're not doing that. They're not doing that this year, they're just gonna do a little caroling in the park. And so obviously, it's to enhance our traffic downtown and encourage people to come and spend a little time in the Christmas spirit. That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. At this time, I'll now declare that the City of Granbury City Council convened into open session, and all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.074 Personnel Matters, City Attorney, section 551.086 Certain Public Power Utilities Competitive Matters, and Discuss Electric Procurement in section 551.071 Consultation with Attorney Pending on Contemplated Litigation or Settlement Offers. At this time, the council is reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in closed session. If there any more discussion, counsel? If not, the council meeting is adjourned.